Reorganization meeting to order, please rise for the flag salute.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the men and women of our armed forces. Thank you. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting and the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 6, 2020. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January 10, 2020, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 7, 2020. This announcement shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. It will now take a roll call vote. Mrs. Cohen?
Here.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Kamna?
Here.
Mrs. Weematt?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
On November 20, the Morris County Clerk issued a statement of determination certifying the election of Christopher M. Zaire, Rhonda L. Cohen, and Antoine Gales to the office of member of the Mount Olive Township Board of Education for a term of three years. Mr. Zaire received 5,191 votes, Mrs. Cohen received 4,519 votes, and Dr. Gales received 5,755 votes. If those newly elected members would now come forward, the Board Attorney will now administer the oath of office.
Congratulations to all our new and returning Board members. Please raise your right hands. I state your name.
I am Antoine Gales.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Do solemnly support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
to the same.
and to the governments established in the United States
and to the governments established in the United States.
and in this state
and in this state.
under the authority of the people, so help me God.
under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I am Antoine Gales.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear.
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
for the office of member of a Board of Education
for office of a member of Board of Education.
and that I am not disqualified as a voter
and that I am not disqualified as a voter.
pursuant to RS
pursuant to RS.
19:4-1
19:4-1.
nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime
nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
or an offense listed in
or an offense listed in.
NJS
NJS. 18A:12-1.
and that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully.
impartially and justly
impartially and justly.
perform all the duties of that office
perform all the duties of that office.
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Fist bump, air fist bump.
Our first order of business is the election of a Board President, so at this time I will open the floor to nominations for Board President.
I'd like to make a recommendation for Anthony Giordano.
Mr. Kamna has nominated Mr. Giordano.
Second.
You don't technically, actually technically do not need a second.
Yes.
I nominate Mr. Gales.
Mr. Robinson has nominated Dr. Gales. Are there any other nominations? At this time, I would request a motion to close the nominations. All in favor?
You need a second. Bill's seconded.
At this time, I'm going to take a vote on the Board President. You will please indicate the candidate of your choice. Mrs. Cohen?
Anthony Giordano.
Dr. Gales?
Myself.
Dr. Giordano?
Myself.
Mr. Kamna?
Dr. Giordano.
Mrs. Weematt?
Dr. Gales.
Mr. Robinson?
Dr. Gales.
Mr. Stevens?
Dr. Giordano.
Mr. Strelachi?
Dr. Giordano.
Mr. Zaire?
Dr. Giordano.
Dr. Giordano has been elected Board President by a majority vote.
Thank you, Board members. I'd like to open up for nominations for Board Vice President at this time.
I'd like to nominate Rhonda Cohen for Vice President.
Anthony, see if there's any other nominations. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought it was still going to happen. I apologize. I have computer issues. Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Seeing none, closing to Motion to close the nominations. Oh, motion to close the nominations?
Need a motion?
Need a second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gales. Nominations are closed. Roll call then, or? All in favor on closing nominations? All in favor on closing nominations? Thank you, Dr. Zimmer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Roll call then.
Roll call, Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes to Ms. Cohen.
Mr. Kamna?
Yes to Ms. Cohen.
Mrs. Weematt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Congratulations to Ms. Cohen.
Thank you.
The next, the presidential appointments and the Moescom representative, NJ SBA delegate and the alternate delegate, we have to vote on those, correct, Dr. Zimmer? Yes. Yes, okay. I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to do this all in one. I'm going to make a motion if everyone's okay with this for 2.3 to 2.5 to keep the representatives as is. I believe it's Mr. Kamna's representative, Moescom, Dr. Gales is the delegate to NJ SBA, and Mr. Robinson, I believe, is the alternate delegate. Am I correct saying that? Yes, sir.
I would like to turn that down because I can't drive quite as well as I used to, and there's night meetings and things like that going down to Trenton. So I would rather give it to someone who really wants to go.
Anyone else would like to be the alternate delegate?
Can we nominate somebody?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Zaire.
I accept.
Super. Dr. Giordano, Ms. Jones suggests that we do each one separately. Okay. All right. That's fine. We'll do each one separately to Board Attorney's astute recommendation. So 2.3, I nominate Mr. Kamna to be the Moescom representative. Any other nominations?
I would need a second, please.
Do it like a regular motion. Oh, just a regular motion, sir, okay. Need a second. I need a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's seconded out?
Mr. Robinson. Questions or comments for the Board? Seeing none, roll call then.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Kamna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weematt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
2.4, I'd like to make a motion to approve Dr. Gales as NJ SBA delegate.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, roll call then.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Kamna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weematt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
2.5, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Zaire to the NJ SBA alternate delegate. Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, roll call then.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Kamna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weematt?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Super, thank you. Number three, presidential appointments. In the past, if everyone would just email what committees they'd like to be on, and then by Friday, we'll have all the liaison, the councils, all the liaisons and the parent groups and the PTAs and Sand Shore partnerships and the PTOs all out to the Board on by Friday. Number four, Board Attorney Annual Review. Dr. Zimmer, the Board Attorney will conduct his annual review of the School Ethics Act and Board Member Code of Ethics. The floor is yours, Mrs. Zimmer. Thank you, Dr. Giordano. So I'm going to do an overview of the New Jersey School Ethics Act, and as you all know, New Jersey has a very comprehensive ethics law that governs the conduct of school board members and other school officials. Usually, we're referring to high-level administrators within a school district. And the School Ethics Act says that board members and other school officials have to avoid conduct that violates the public trust or which essentially creates the impression among the public that such trust is being violated. In other words, board members have to avoid not only actual conflicts of interest, but they have to avoid what's called the appearance of impropriety. And I always tell board members, if something doesn't pass the smell test, if somebody's going to ever justifiably question that you voted on something due to some improper motive or because you had to gain from it personally or financially, it's something that you should recuse yourself from, it's something you should abstain from. And if there's ever a question about whether a particular course of conduct is advisable, I'm happy to provide my insights on these issues. You can always go to the School Ethics Commission for an advisory opinion. They do issue advisories. All their advisories are published on their website if there's ever a question. But I'm familiar with the cases and have a pretty good understanding of, I'll call it, the do's and don'ts for board members and other school officials. The School Ethics Act essentially is broken down into two parts. We have what are called the prohibited acts, and they deal with conflicts of interest, things like board members not acting in matters where they have a direct or indirect personal or financial matter, something that could benefit themselves or family members. Those are conflicts that board members have to avoid at all costs. And then within the School Ethics Act, you also have the Code of Ethics, which I've just handed out to everybody, it was also attached to your agenda. The Code of Ethics only applies to Board of Education members. It does not apply to other school officials, like school administrators. And let me highlight some of the, they're all, of course, extremely important, but let me highlight a couple of the ones where board members sometimes find themselves getting into troubles, trouble. And if anybody believes that a board member has violated the Ethics Act, you can file a complaint with the New Jersey School Ethics Commission, and they will decide whether the conduct was proper or a violation of the School Ethics Act. There is a six-month statute of limitations. In other words, the complaint has to be brought within six months of the time that you knew or essentially should have known of the conduct. So let's talk about some of these provisions. What is the essential role of a board member? Now, if you go to Section C of the Code of Ethics, that really sums it up very nicely. A board member's role is policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Board members set policy for the district, they plan for the future of the district, and they appraise. They take a step back and say, hey, how are we doing? What are our goals? What could we be doing better? That is essentially, in a nutshell, the role of a board member. The role of a board member is not to administer the schools, so I now turn our attention to Section D. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, see that they are well-run. We've hired an excellent team of administrators in Mount Olive. It is the job of the administration to deal with the day-to-day operations of the school district. That is far beyond the role of what a board member should be doing. Can you provide insights and can you ask questions? Absolutely. Nobody's ever saying that a board member has to be a rubber stamp. Nevertheless, again, giving direct orders to personnel, telling staff members how to do their jobs, et cetera, is beyond the role of a board member, and in essence, it's an ethics violation. Section E, you're going to recognize that your authority rests with the Board of Education, and you will make no personal promise or take private action that could compromise the Board. You have authority to act as board members when you're sitting at the dais here. When you leave this room, you don't have the authority to take private action, to make personal promises, to do your own investigations. Again, beyond the role of a Board of Education member. And private action is an area where board members oftentimes get themselves into trouble because they forget that they, again, only have authority to act at the dais here or through their various committees. Again, unless authorized by the Board of Education to engage in a particular course of action. Section F, you're going to refuse to surrender your independent judgment to special interest groups or use the school for your own personal gain or for the gain of friends. You're here for all of the kids, for all of the community, not specific segments of the community. Section G deals with confidentiality. One of the most important provisions, in my opinion, that you're going to deal with as board members, on your time with the Board of Education, as you know, you're going to come across a lot of confidential information, confidential student matters, confidential personnel matters, litigation matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. It is essential that what you were told in your capacity as a board member remains confidential. I always tell boards that if the board members feel that there's a leak on the Board of Education and that confidential information is being leaked out of our executive sessions, it completely undermines the ability of the Board to get its job done because nobody's going to feel comfortable speaking. Everybody's going to feel that, hey, as soon as we leave the room, it's going to be known that I said this about this particular matter, or I said that, and now I'm going to be tarnished perhaps in the community. So again, in order for this Board and any Board to function well, you must maintain the confidentiality of what comes into your purview as a board member. Your children are not bound by the Ethics Act. Your spouses, your friends are not bound by the Ethics Act. And you might say, well, I'm going to tell my wife when I get home. She is not, or he is not, husband is not bound by the Ethics Act. So you have to be very, very careful in not sharing the things that you learn, as tempting as it may be, with your spouses, because again, if they leak the information, it's on you. Section H deals with appointing the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. By law, only the superintendent of schools can make personnel recommendations and personnel appointments. The Board votes on them. The law says that the Board is supposed to, shall support the recommendations of the superintendent on personnel matters and shall, and the law says you should not withhold your approval for arbitrary and capricious reasons. In other words, you're generally supposed to support personnel recommendations unless you have a darn good reason not to, a reasonable reason, a justifiable reason. And again, I know Dr. Zouicki is always available if there's ever a question about an appointment or whatever. I know, just like most superintendents, he prefers that you pick up the phone and call him ahead of the meeting and ask a question and try to vet some of your concerns. It's not to say you can't also do it in public, but I think proper protocol is that nobody wants to play gotcha, and it's best to reach out with a question or an issue about anything on the agenda to either the Board President or the superintendent ahead of the meeting. Section I deals with supporting and protecting school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. That means that board members should never evaluate the superintendent, the business administrator, the assistants, or directors, or anybody for that matter, teachers, in a public arena. That is a big no-no. Board members oftentimes get themselves in trouble for publicly criticizing, publicly evaluating the administrators, teachers, and other staff within the school district, and that's what Section I was designed to avoid. Section J is a good section, in my opinion, for board members. It gives you the opportunity to punt. So when you're at the local supermarket and somebody comes up to you with a complaint about their child's third-grade teacher or about the food in the cafeteria, the Code of Ethics says that you're supposed to refer those complaints to Dr. Zouicki. He is the one who is supposed to handle those complaints, not you as a board member. And you're supposed to say to the community member, thank you for bringing your concern to my attention. Not my job, I'm going to refer to Dr. Zouicki, and I know Dr. Zouicki, he's going to get back to you within the next 24 hours. That's what Section J is designed to deal with. Again, complaints are matters dealt with by the administration, the chief school administrator, not by Board of Education members. Final point I want to make about all of this is that one of the areas I see board members oftentimes getting themselves into trouble with is social media. Social media has its pros and its cons, let's say, but it's very important that if you are somebody who likes to use social media as a board member, that you make it very clear when you speak on issues, particularly issues involving the school district, that you are speaking in your individual capacity and that you are not speaking on behalf of the Board unless, of course, you've been authorized to speak on behalf of the Board. There are laws, ethics cases, I should say, where they implore board members to have disclaimers on their social media posts. If you write a letter to the local newspaper about an issue involving the Mount Olive School District, you don't surrender your First Amendment rights. You're allowed to make commentary as long as you're providing accurate information, you're not violating confidentiality, and you have the disclaimer basically saying, I'm speaking as an individual, these are my own personal opinions, and I am not speaking on behalf of the Mount Olive Board of Education member, even though I am a Mount Olive Board of Education member. If you need that disclaimer language, I'm happy to provide you the latest and greatest from the School Ethics Commission. They do have some suggested language that we use, just so you know. And again, if there's ever a question about whether you should or should not say something, my feeling is A, err on the side of caution, and B, if there's ever a doubt, if there's ever a question through the Board President, you can reach out to me and ask me the question. I'm happy, and we've done it before on issues, I'm happy to provide you with my legal opinion about voting, and if you have a question about do I have a conflict or not a conflict, I'm happy to weigh in, and obviously, my job is to keep the Board out of trouble and to keep everybody on a straight ethical path. So with that said, does anybody have any questions? Dr., Mr. Strelachi?
Yeah, I would like to add one thing to J, and I know I've been guilty of it over the years myself. It says, "I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution." I would like to add to that, and that is, before anyone acts on, at a public meeting, please consult with the chief operating officer, because you might not have the correct information, and it doesn't look good in the public if we're complaining about something and we really don't know whether that had been acted on or not. So I would just like to suggest that before we bring it up in a meeting, we should call or talk to the superintendent about what action had been taken.
It's a very good suggestion. That's all I have, Dr. Giordano. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zimmer. I just want for the record, I know I've been getting some text messages. The YouTube link, live stream, just for the public record, have it on the record, is going in and out, so people aren't able to stream it. I know Dr. Zouicki said there had been a global issue with YouTube throughout the day, and I know the guys are working on it, so I just want to put that on the record that in case anyone in the audience is getting text messages that's not streaming, I know, or any other board members get a text message, they're aware of it, they're trying to work on it, but it has been an issue, and it has to do with YouTube, not with us here.
It's uploaded tonight.
Okay. It'll be uploaded tonight, the whole meeting. You can actually, anybody can come here too if they want. Anybody can come here physically. Yeah, well, up to 25 people, not even. Oh, yeah, yeah, we got people, yeah, people can, you're right, Dr. Zimmer, I forgot the new rule. People can still come to the full meetings. We are a government entity, and as such, according to the governor's rules, we are allowed to have a capacity of 100 people, isn't it, I think? I think it's something like 100, 125, 150. That's always an option as well. Thank you. Public comments on action items for the reorg agenda. 5.1, members of the community may comment on any action items included on tonight's agenda prior to Board discussion. It's 6.1, all the way down to 6.22. Seeing none, close the public comments then. Dr. Gales, you have a motion for the reorganization action items?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent, and I assume the Board President, to move action items 6.1 all the way down to 6.22.
Questions or comments from the Board?
I'm sorry, who's seconded out?
Mr. Strelachi.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none, roll call then.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Kamna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weematt?
Yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Abstain on 6.2, yes on the rest.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Public comments, students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Stand up, say your name and address for the record, and ask me on anything that's going on in our school district. Yeah, this would be the time you want to come up now. Perfect. That's okay.
I'm sorry, Brianna Jarvis, 54, Deer Pass Drive, Flanders. I'm sorry, I missed, if you already discussed this, just about the return to school. Is it going to be full day when they return to school then? That's what I've heard.
I'm going to be doing a communication on Wednesday. We're still in discussion with the Department of Health. When we put out the communication before the break, we said everything was tentative. I can tell you right now, it will not be full day on the 11th and the 19th. We're not able to do that. It's going to be in February. So right now, we're working with the Department of Health on whether it would be February 1st or February 16th.
And do you have an idea what percentage of teachers are going to be in the building for that? And if, when you do go to full day, do you anticipate it being then on computer as it is now, or? You know, when they were hybrid, the kids were mostly on the computer and the
So it'd be, no, so it's on the 19th, we're returning to the cohort model. So on the 11th of January, all specialized programs are coming back in person, and they attend daily. And then the 19th, we're on the AB cohort model. So the idea is that when we go back to full day, that the students who are attending in person are on full day, and then the students who are at home are on full day as well. And I do understand, you know, that the idea of how long can you be on screen time and things like that, I do understand all that. We want to get the kids back in, and hopefully, we're hoping that we're going to be vaccinated in 1B in February, and that we can have more kids come back in. Parents can have the option to switch cohorts in February, but I have a meeting tomorrow with the Department of Health, and we're working out whether it's February 1st or February 16th.
In terms of going full day?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're kind of planning ahead for that, so when you do go full day, do you have a plan in place to get the kids off the screen, or is it still, as of now, going to be just a longer version of? Or is it still, as of now, going to be just a longer version of...
So the remote model, students attend remotely, and Cohort C has to be in place as well. So...
I'm not trying to be, I'm asking you...
No, no, I understand. Yeah, I understand.
I know, but you tend to get kind of short with me when I ask you questions.
Not my intention at all.
I'm not trying to be confrontational with you. I understand you have to accommodate for Cohort C. If my child is in school, because you're accommodating for those kids, will they be on the computer? Will everyone be taught on the computer, pretty much, as they are now, is my question.
So we're a one-to-one district, so we use our devices a lot. So where it's appropriate, our teachers leverage technology for some of our personalized learning tools. So I'm not being confrontational, but I can't say that it's going to be not, we're not going to use technology. That's up to individual teachers to use that. So, but are you going to have...
Obviously not, what I'm asking.
So to your question, will there be simultaneous instruction with students who are in the building and students who are at home? The answer to that question is yes.
So they're going to be on the computer?
Correct.
And in terms of teachers back in the building, do you have an idea? Because I know you were saying, like, the FMLA ran out, but a lot of teachers were home, you know, with accommodations. Do we have an idea of what, just an idea, 90%, 80%, 60%? How many of those teachers will be back in the building?
Yeah, I can tell you, it changes on a, you know, we had, before the break, we had over 50 teachers who were quarantined. So that changes on a daily basis, and that's on our dashboard. But we're looking at over 90% of our faculty and staff are back. And the students, I'm sorry, when the specialized programs return on Monday, the expectation is that the faculty is returning to the buildings as well.
On Monday?
Correct.
And the...
We're testing this week. We're doing COVID testing Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I saw that. And is any of this dependent on the results of that COVID testing? Is that why, why, what's the purpose of the COVID?
Safety. So the purpose of the COVID testing is because you had a lot of travel, a lot of people getting together between, you know, the holidays, that the timing of it is what's been recommended by the Department of Health to capture as many people as possible who may be asymptomatic positive. And so that those folks can be identified voluntarily. And then there's a built-in quarantine. So we'll still open up on the 11th for specialized programs. And then the 19th, there's a built-in quarantine that folks know, and then they're not coming in and exposing people. So the idea is that we're open on the 11th for a specialized program, the 19th, return to the cohort. So the testing is to identify asymptomatic positives is the main target.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Closing the public comments. Board comments. Mr. Zaire?
I have none.
Short, sweet. Ms. Wimmet?
Welcome to our newest board member.
Thank you very much.
It's nice to be volunteered for a position. So it's good to get your feet right in there.
Happens every day at home.
Welcome to Rhonda, back again. She always comes back. And just to let everyone know about the Lego competition is this weekend.
Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to echo that sentiment, Mr. Zaire, and to Rhonda. Welcome, newly elected and a comeback queen. I'm glad to see her back. And just reminding everyone that if anybody needs to take a test, they're going to do it at the high school this week for school board, I mean, for school members and other members of the community. So it's at the high school. I think it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
It's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Okay, thanks. So if you need one, I understand it's a walk-up if you want, or you can register and get a time. And that's it. Thank you.
Dr. Gels?
Thank you. Just wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome back. Welcome back to Mrs. Cohen. And welcome to Mrs. Zaire. Congratulations. And I am looking forward to a productive, optimistic 2021. Thank you.
Mr. Kemna?
Just like to welcome Ms. Cohen back, or welcome her, and welcome Mr. Zaire, and welcome back, I guess, our continuation for Dr. Gels. And Happy New Year.
Mr. Stevens?
I want to take a moment to congratulate Rhonda Cohen, as well as Mr. Zaire. I know your son very well, Mr. Zaire. He's a very great, you know, hard-working young man. And I wanted to take a moment to, you know, be gracious about having Antonio Gels back on the board. And I want to congratulate everybody and hope everyone had a wonderful holiday, and everyone stays safe. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Stilachi?
I'd like to wish Mr. Robinson a happy birthday, first of all. Bill, what are you, you're 82 now, Bill?
No.
Just 80.
I just turned to be an octoman now.
I'd like to welcome back Rhonda. And I want to say something about Chris. I mean, Chris, it's amazing, Chris, I'm getting old because you went to school with my kids. Unbelievable. Well, welcome, Chris. I'm sure you'll do a great job.
That means Chris is getting old, too.
Yes.
Good to see you, man. Good to see you, man.
That's it.
Ms. Cohen?
Happy birthday, Bill. Great to be back, excited to see everybody. And to be Vice President, thank you all for the vote, and I'm looking forward to a great year.
I'd like to thank everyone again for voting me as Board President. Happy New Year to quote Dr. Gels, and Happy Birthday to Mr. Robinson. And that's all I have to say. Lynn, if we're going to motion to adjourn, we're going to go to the other agenda, correct? Don't we have a meeting, we have a regular meeting? Or is this it? Oh, no, we have to go to confidential session now, and then we're done. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
We're going to a closed session, and then we're going to come out and take action.
Yes, I got that. I got that part. Just want to make sure I'm doing it, we have to switch to another screen and another things. Okay. Motion to recess in confidential session. Resolve that the board be in confidential session for the purpose of discussing personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege, pending or anticipated litigation, confidential pupil matters. Be resolved that the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Action will be taken.
Can I get a second? Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oh, I don't have my gal, there's no galip here, sorry. We're in closed session, thanks. We're just going to stay out here.